Good afternoon. We are here for the special meeting of the Natrona County Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, 1:30 PM. The meeting is called "The Order." May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Frill. Commissioner Laird.
Very present.
Commissioner Mill.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nicolason.
Here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A2.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Laird, cited by Commissioner North. Any opposition, or I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session.
How are you?
This way.
Right.
But it's just, it's a, it's hard to get the thing.
We're gonna, I'm gonna end up breaking this. That's why I'm just hoping that I don't break the point. I leave it unplugged. No, he, he, no, he wasn't.
Oh.
Well, they were doing, I think, one of the teams, and then they still have the message. So, and so far on my computer, I didn't see where they disconnected. Oh. Yeah. And you can just walk along with it.
Yeah, I haven't. Got it cute.
Oh, yeah, cute. Thank you. I mean, they're not now. Yeah, I can, do you have, do you have this field plot? Better than you get a spiel, I don't know the one that's spiel. Sorry. Hold on.
You're doing what you're doing. Working good? Yes, it is by the way.
We are back from our executive session, from our special meeting. And I would ask for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner North. Is there a second?
Second.
Then seconded by Commissioner Laird. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We now will move into our work session. Michelle, do you need to stop and restart or? Do you want me to like go beep or, you know, do an alarm on my phone or something so they got a cue?
We are.
Don't be poking me. All right. We are here for the work session agenda of the Neistrona County Commissioners, Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. It is 2:58 in the afternoon. Our first appointment is with the Department, County Attorney for Purpose Opening of Bids.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. So if you all recall, we opened up bidding, sealed bidding, for Saddlestring and the sale of the Saddlestring property. And per the resolution, this is the meeting that we open those. And so I have a special letter opener, so I don't look like a heathen just ripping open envelopes. Oh, and I need, sorry, I have a little rule sheet. No instant decision will be made at the time to ensure that the B O C C has time to evaluate final decision of submitted bids in the best interest of the county. So I'm going to open one we received on August 1st, 2024, from a Haley tenant. So I'm going to open one we received on August 1st, 2024, from a Haley tenant. Oh, and so Ms. Tenet's, her bid is fifty thousand, one dollar. Okay, and hold on, I have to put this back in the envelope. So the next one we received on July 31st, 2024, from Thornburg Investments LLC. And the purchase amount offered is eighteen thousand dollars. Thank you, Michelle. And the final one was received on July 26th from Jim Arrowwood. His name's not on the front, but I'm sure it's in here, and I believe that's his last name. We will see. James Arrowwood and his bid is fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And pursuant to our resolution, you all are, you all may consider all or any of these at the corresponding meetings tonight at five, or you do not have to. I would ask that Legal be allotted a little bit of time to review the bids to make sure they comply with our resolution.
Counsel, is there any compelling reason to make a decision tonight, or is this one that could wait until the 20th?
I believe it can wait. There's, it's been vacant for however long.
What, what is, what was the appraised value of the property?
It was approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay. And, um, you can let us know of any frog hair or details on those bids or offers that are material and relevant. Commissioners, any, any questions, comments or concerns? Commissioner North.
Lita.
Yes.
I guess my question is, for the record, what exactly are you going to be looking at to make sure that these bids are legal and acceptable?
Sure, I am looking at our resolution number forty-one dash twenty-three, a resolution establishing a process to sell county-owned real property. In pursuant to number nine, there are one, two, three, seven, I guess, elements that the bid requires, such as the name, the phone number, the legal description, the purchase amount offered, I mean, there are nothing, it's nothing that will take us a while, I just obviously wasn't able to look at them because they were sealed. So I want to make sure that the resolution was complied with.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty, that's quick, should be a fairly quick process.
Sure, I just.
Alright, that's.
I just glanced at them today, right now, and didn't take the time to make sure, just look for the price and the name.
Like I said, I just wanted to make sure that it's on the record, just exactly what you were looking at.
Sure.
Determining if they were a legitimate bidder, huh?
Yes.
Commissioner Laird.
So we could vote on it, subject to the approval that, by the county attorney's office, that all those conditions were met, correct?
You could do that and amend, yes, you could do that in the regular meeting tonight.
So we wouldn't have to put things off, if we choose to think one of those bids is sufficient, we can accept it tonight, you can, probably between now and tonight, you can probably check those kinds of questions out and tell us anyway, right?
Yes, I could do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
I appreciate the thought, we need to be diligent in this with the three different bids coming forward. I think Legal, if you have the time to get it to us tonight, that's cool, if not, the 20th is more than acceptable. I would ask that as you do your review, that, that you provide us with a memorandum or some kind of brief with who bid how much and where they lie within our policy.
Yes, that, I'll be able to do that, yes.
Thank you.
I just had one other question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
Lita, what is the rule, is it that we have to accept the highest bid?
No, per the resolution, you all may accept whichever bid that you feel is in the best interest of the county, or?
What's the statute say though?
No bid.
Isn't there a statute, I thought we had accept highest bid.
I didn't, I don't believe so, I'm double checking with our county attorney.
That's city public works.
Yeah, not to my knowledge.
You know, I have long been a, of the mind that we shouldn't be in a hurry to dispose of our county-owned property. Um, I, I want you to have sufficient time to review those, to make note of any concerns you might have, to prepare a memorandum. And, and I don't believe there's any reason we need to act on these tonight, so let's plan on readdressing this on the 20th.
Okay, thank you so much.
Um, the, I think we're gonna move to our next appointment?
Yes.
Unless you had something pressing?
I, no, thank you so much, thanks, Michelle.
Our next appointment is with Mr. Michael Brown, Parks Department, Purpose Hell's Half Acre, update, and Casper Mountain Trails Center Lodge update. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for having me today. You mentioned Hell's Half Acre first, just an update on that, we have two grants that were awarded. Staff at Visit Casper applied for them, with me providing information for those applications. The first one is a rec board grant for ninety thousand dollars. This is, has some in-kind match to it, so there's no monetary match. This is for a construction of a boardwalk to provide better access for viewing from, from the main parking lot. This will be in partnership with the Pathways, they're gonna construct the sections of boardwalk and then the park staff will, will install those. So, we're probably looking at, by the end of next spring, this will be a two semester project for them. And then another one is a State of Office Tourism, the State Office of Tourism, is a hundred thousand dollar grant, and this is to improve the fencing, grading of the parking lots, couple of picnic tables for the shelters, a single stall outhouse over in the picnic area, and some cattle guard entrances that we can close and lock to maintain access a little bit better seasonally. Both of these are through Visit Casper right now, I briefly had a conversation with the county attorney and Tyler over at Visit Casper, because I, I got a little confused, I didn't read very clearly. Visit Casper is a signatory on these. I'm listed as a project manager. At first I was thinking, well, how's this gonna work? And I thought it might work better if, since I'll be doing the ordering and the quoting of materials, that maybe the county needs to, it's a reimbursement, both of these grants are reimbursement, so you spend the money, you invoice the grant. To, Visit Casper can go either way on this, so I think to minimize any delay, we'll just continue with the Visit Casper being the, the grant, grantee. And then, so I will put together quotes and bids for them, I'll submit those to Visit Casper, they will then order the materials or, or the work to be done, and then they will invoice the grant, unless the Commissioners see otherwise.
I, I think that makes some sense to me, I, I reviewed that agreement, and it, it does contemplate the Nistrona County Travel and Tourism Council, and I knew that wasn't really us, or at least I didn't think it was, so I think this makes some sense. I think it is good that you would be designated project manager because it is county property. And on that note, I don't know if you and Legal have talked about some sort of M O U or M O A between Visit Casper and the county. And I don't wanna, you know, make it overly complicated. But, but just so it's clear, you're a project manager, the funds will be, you know, fronted by Visit Casper and reimbursed to them. Something of that nature seems to make sense because of it being an improvement on county-owned property.
Yeah, and I believe county Legals are, she just briefly discussed that with me, so I think that's the next step, and I will be in touch with Visit Casper to get that worked out.
Good.
And hopefully have that, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, probably, huh? Yeah.
Good, and then the other would be, have we ever done anything with, with Pathways before, and do we need an M O A with them? I'm super excited that, that there's that, that potential, but I just wondered.
So I don't believe we have, the Lions Club has done a lot of that, the new bridges of the Braille Trail were constructed by them. So, I, I've had a couple of meetings with Pathways as well as school district officials, and so I think we can get that ironed out pretty quick on, on what they may require, so.
Great, are there other questions for Michael on the Hell's Half Acre? Did you have anything else for us, Michael, on that one?
Uh, no, I'm looking forward to kind of getting that livened up and, and make it a little more accessible. Another part of the tourism grant was some signage, you know, informational signs and, and whatnot, so it, you know, kind of looks like a prison yard right now, in a sense, with the barbed wire on the tall eight-foot fence, and you gotta peek through the chain link, everybody sneaks through the corner of the chain link to go out there, so this boardwalk will provide a, a better. And the plan is that this will be an ADA boardwalk, it'll be wide enough and the slope will be appropriate, so it meets ADA requirements, so, well, we'll do that also, you know, obviously we want to make it accessible to everybody.
Good. Okay, um, Trail Center?
So the Trail Center right now, the foundation floor has been poured, the erection contractor, I, I've noticed they moved some, some metal around, but they haven't put anything up yet, so that'll be happening directly, they have all their equipment up there to do that. I have a couple of change order requests, well, a couple issues. The first one is, there's excess dirt up there, quite a pile, I may have, let's see if I have some photos here I can pass around.
Occurred to me while in discussion of the lodge, we were talking about where we'd come up with dirt for the, for a parking lot expansion. That would have been perfect if we'd known we'd had that much excess almost.
Well, yeah, and so this excess dirt, I have a change order request here for thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Now, I briefly went through this this morning, I haven't had it very long. The first section of it is a total of eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. That work's actually been completed, that was strip and pile excess dirt from the new parking lot. So, the subcontractor's looking to ma- maybe get reimbursed on that, work that's already been done. Section two is to complete some work, the subcontractor, the design, and I don't know how many times I talked about this in design, but it neglected to blend in our ski trails at a decent slope, so we had some really steep cutoffs, the groomer wasn't gonna be able to pass through here and around the building. So they took some of the excess material and kind of blended those trails in so that we can make them passable. And there's some work yet to finish there, that's six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, that's section two of this, to finish that. And then the new, section three is basically to haul all this material up to slash pile for future use by Roden Bridge and Parks. And that is a seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollar total on that. Included in here is, you know, Casper's liability, general conditions, and contractor markup on this. That's why it comes to thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three. There's been a lot of discussion, and I did provide the chairman this morning an email from the architect in their opinions on these change order requests. To summarize, basically, they don't consider them justified. The first section, the contractor was to strip the site, they don't believe there's a change in scope there. Section two states that I provided the contractor options to help waste excess material on site instead of hauling it, so there's no change in scope there, section three to haul all that material. They said the contractor was responsible for calculating out the final numbers for the project in their bid. There wasn't any error, error by the design team, owner, surveyor, etc., so change is not justified. They do suggest, however, in spirit of cooperation, if the county wants to pay the contractor something, they think the amount requested is excessive, and I, I can go into further detail. They did have their civil engineer look at it and suggestion on the total haul amount and whatnot. I'm not sure where the error came from. I've looked at the design, I've looked back through our design meetings to see where these quantities. The design team does not provide an engineered estimated quantity of cut and fill, is what I've been told, because they don't want any liability for somebody taking that for granted and, and it having a gross error. So we sit here with, I don't know, eleven hundred tons, twelve hundred tons of material sitting on the site that's in the way, and we have to find a solution for that.
So, I, I did have an opportunity to go up there today. And then, and it's a huge pile of dirt. Actually, there's a large pile and then a huge pile next to it. One thought I had was as they were excavating this hole, because I think the lodge is essentially in a hole now. Why didn't they just start trucking that off, or at least take it more than twenty feet from the foundation? Because it is totally in the way, and we are really in a jam here in terms of getting the, the steel up and the power pole that goes right there, et cetera. And so, we've got to do something, and we need to do something ASAP. But, but I, I don't know where, I don't know how we excavated to that point, because I do believe that the blending, if they've done some blending, they have quite a bit more to do, because I think that it's, if not a hazard for the skiers to get on and off of the Nordic trails, you know, and by hazard, you know, some inexperienced skier can't stop and hits the building, trying to come, you know, into the building, and little Johnny ten-year-old has a bad day. So, you know, that's, that ship has sailed and we have to do more dirt work. I, I, I don't know why this is the county's responsibility, I think that I would like you to forward that to all the Commissioners from Amundson, so that we can review it and try and digest it. One question I have before the other Commissioners get a chance to weigh in is, I'd like to know from our legal counsel what our options are, if we can pay this under protest, and then you know, arm wrestle at a later point with either the architect, the contractor, the subcontractor, or if it's the county's issue, then maybe we just accept that, but sitting here today, I don't feel like we can wait, and sitting here today, I don't feel like I'm ready to write the check. Commissioners, Commissioner Mill.
Michael, are they sure they're not gonna need any of that cut?
So, the bulk of this material is not quality, we have another issue with the new parking lot. It's pumping, and we, we're coming up with a solution, I don't have a price on that. I have had a conversation, and I've got a ballpark number that I don't even want to discuss right now until I have more details. So most of that material that's stockpiled there isn't quality for construction purposes. It's not gonna compact well, it's gonna migrate water through it, it's got a lot of organic matter in it, just because it was excavated from a forest. And so, that material is just not, there's the small pile there that can be And so, um, that material is just not, there's the small pile there that can be utilized on site, but, um, you know, the most, most of it just really isn't quality for, um, high level parking areas and things of the sort.
Right. It looked like there was a lot of organic in it and different stuff.
Yeah.
Is there a possibility that we could, may not be popular or whatever, but just use it off the side of the parking lot there and kind of slope it down? But nature takes course.
Probably maybe max twenty percent that could really be used on, on site to, um, improve the trail area. Uh, my staff, uh, park staff and myself have been up there and looked at it. We've actually marked areas that we can do this. Um, if you push it off into the trees and bury the trees, then those trees, if they, they're not hollowed out around the trunk, that they tend to die. With that much fill around them. So, um, you know, the best solution that we came up with was, uh, to give them a short haul up to the slash pile versus having to haul it off the mountain. I did suggest to the subcontractor, I said, you know, if there's a, somebody, a cabin owner on the mountain that wants the entire quantity and wants to pay you to haul it to their site, take it, sell it, you know, and, and then it wouldn't be a cost to the county. Um, you know, the idea of kind of opening it up for, uh, every cabin owner to come get some, that opens up liability for them being on site, who's going to load their vehicles and taking a pickup or a dump bed trailer at a time. It's not going to really put a dent in that, that pile. And then that's a timeline matter too, because that could take a month.
Yeah, we, we don't want all those trailers twenty feet from that structure.
Yeah.
As this being built. Uh, you know, I didn't see where we could dispose of any significant quantity of dirt on site with the, uh, terrain, with the little sheds that are there on the east side, um, and the septic and on and on and on. So, um, I, I think moving it to the slash pile is appropriate. And I think that, um, it can be used by the county or the public at some point in time. But, but I think you're right. We can't just, just leave it there for now where, where it currently sits.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, you know, why it was located where it was. Originally their, uh, contractor trailers and whatnot and C cans were all in the old parking lot there as well as all the, uh, metal building. It was all stored, stored there and they couldn't put it anywhere else. And then they had to work on the new parking lot. So it just kind of became this tower right there.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, for you.
I guess my question to you, Michael, is on that change order, is the moving the dirt from its current location in slash pile, is that part of the change order that cost in there?
Yes, yes, that's a.
It's the third item.
That's section three here. Price to load haul and dispose of excess dirt offsite at Parks Department slash pile. And that includes a loader to kind of keep that pile organized up there. Um, they've got quite a bit of side dump up here. Uh, obviously this is a lump sum bid that they have, so I'm sure they, they've, uh, made sure that they've got appropriate number of trucks and whatnot on that.
So I guess my follow-up question to that is, is if it needs to be moved and that's going to be a, uh, price we're going to pay anyways. And I see Mr. Hagler's in the back of the room, but is that equipment that we would have, that we'd be able to do that on our own and save a substantial amount of money?
I, I, I think that the quantity and the other things that, that we have going on, I, I don't know that we have the equipment or the time. I'm seeing Mr. Hagler shaking his head no.
Yeah, from what I understand with conversations with, with Mike is, you know, it's a staffing, having enough staff to do the work, um, and, and not fall behind on, on the other projects that are going on.
Michael, what's your suggestion? We've run out of time, but, um, um, what are your thoughts?
I think that, uh, I can go back to the contractor and see if we can't work maybe something better here. Maybe get them to refine their numbers a little bit better and, and get a better understanding, um, to cut this. But, you know, I want to get the project done. This is going to be a hindrance. We have to solve it one way or another. Um, but if, the way I read the contract is they're responsible for removal of excess. So if we want to stick to that, then it's going to, they're going to be on the hook for this. The subcontractor, ISCO, the Parks Department does a lot of work with them. Uh, they help us in a lot of different ways and I, I think Roden Bridge also utilizes them quite a bit. So we have a good relationship with them. And not to say that this is going to cause a bad one, but, um, trying to meet in the middle, I think might be the first step, but we have to find a solution soon.
Well, uh, my understanding is that, uh, Caspar isn't comfortable with, um, moving the dirt or having ISCO move the dirt and punting on responsibility for it. I specifically asked, uh, Mr. Hayden that question today. Um, so I think it comes back to legally, contractually, um, you know, feeling, being advised by everybody that we shouldn't wait two more weeks to hammer this out to our next meeting on the twentieth. Um, can we approve it but reserve our rights? Um, for a set off or offset down the road or to, to get the money back?
Mr. Chairman, I haven't, um, looked at the contract recently and, and not specifically for, you know, this particular incident. Um, so I'm, I'm unsure, um, of whose responsibility contractually it is. I, you know, deferred to Mr., what Mr. Brown is saying. I'm, I'm sure he's correct. But, um, if we need to move forward that quickly, I think that's an option certainly. But like I say, I, I am not super familiar with what the circumstances are.
Well, and, and I, with the architect making a statement like that, uh, I know that a contract, um, you know, kind of alludes to the situation where the architect makes the recommendation and then the consequences of that, I think, are spelled out. I can't remember exactly what happens, but, but the fact that the architect has said this is the situation, um, then what? And, and maybe our rights are impaired or maybe, maybe what we can't, maybe our hands are tied a little bit if the architects made that, made that recommendation. So I think we need to look at that ASAP. Has, has the contractor, um, and the subcontractor, have they had a chance to look at that email as well and respond to that?
Uh, no, I, um, no, this was provided, um, just to myself and a civil engineer.
Okay.
Um, so I haven't, I had a brief discussion summarizing some of this with the subcontractor on a phone call this morning. What I could do is on section three, um, see if there's any way to have the subcontractor do this as a timing materials, um, with a not to exceed because maybe they only need half the side dumps to get up there and get it done than what they have estimated in here. And that would reduce the cost, um, you know, seven thousand dollars or so.
Sometimes it works like that on a T and M and sometimes.
Sometimes it doesn't, yeah, so.
Uh, so, all right, well, I don't know that we should do anything else, um, at this point. Um, I think that in fairness, Caspar and ISCO, uh, should have the opportunity to review and respond to that.
Okay.
Um, and Amundson, uh, should have the opportunity to respond to or review whatever response they make. And, and please make it a priority, uh, with legal counsel to work through the issues and, and we'll see. And, and maybe we can, um, act, uh, prior to our next meeting and then ratify it at the next meeting. But, um, anything else from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Michael, just a question real quick, um, were you able to get that water sleeve in through the, under the road before?
Yes.
Finished it?
Yep.
Great.
Yep, so that's been completed. Um, we actually have provided water from our well for, you know, watering down the foundation and whatnot when they poured that. So they have water on site. Um, not a lot, but they have a little bit of water for their needs for cleaning tools and, and that sort of stuff, so.
Great, thank you.
Um, if I just have one second, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The parking lot in the soft spots, um, Ron and Amundson says, you know, he suggested not to make any form of decisions on this until we get the COR for the soft spots, which is pretty significant. The GeoTech's come up with a plan. Um, it's probably going to have another hundred and fifty, or no, sorry, another fifteen hundred tons of material that we're going to have to relocate. So above and beyond what's already piled there, they're going to have to ex- excavate that down to get that from pumping. And, and the concern with that is if we don't do anything, we may have school buses stuck up to their axles when it gets soft. Is the concern, or it may work itself out. But that was in a swamp. It's always been a swamp. Um, those concerns were brought up during design. School district kind of forced us into putting a parking lot when they provided their funds. Um, you know, originally the plan was to kind of leave that area alone, so. Um, just to bring that up too, and I can include some of that in the email on this change order request when I send to the commissioners.
Yeah, well, and, and in some ways that is a related issue. In some ways that's, that's separate. My understanding is that's like a two or three foot seam of organic dirt running through a significant.
And I can share these photos with you guys. You can look at them afterwards.
Well, maybe they can move the dirt a little farther than twenty feet from the building this time when they're doing the, the X on the, uh, uh, on this, this parking lot, soft spots. But, but in addition, um, I wonder if there's an opportunity to go back to the school, uh, district and see if there's some additional funding, uh, some additional participation from them on this.
Yeah, possibly. I mean, I can reach out to, uh, I can't remember his name, but I.
Because it is under this additional parking area, right?
Yes.
I mean, it is.
Yeah, it's completely within that area, yes.
So, anyway, well, um, you, you might, you might make contact in that regard and see, uh, if there's a, a conversation to have.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, with your permission, I'd like to go off script for just a second and ask, uh, Michael about the archery range. Uh, you sent us a email about it with some, with work I planned for target replacements and, and the like. Um, and that's great. I, I think we should be doing something with it. It is fantastic facility or range up there and, and we've just kind of gone by the wayside. Um, we're finding grants for Hills Half Acre for ninety K, hundred K, but this is just kind of sitting out there. Um, I like what you've sent us. I, can you come up with maybe a couple of year plan or a two, five, ten year plan for that place? With like parking lot expansion or just to develop that a lot more than what it is. I think we're, we're neglecting a huge portion. Some of my friends are passing on me, but I also used to use it, not very well, but I used it. And it was a fantastic area to, to shoot.
Yeah, I can come up with a long-term plan and also that, those quotes, those came from Ostero Archers. I can't take credit for that package. Um, I do prefer the targets that are more, more expensive package. Um, Parks Department doesn't have equipment to deliver those down on the trail. So, uh, that would have to be coordinated with them.
And maybe it could be something too that we go in partnership with, uh, you know, like the Snow Gypsies or whoever or the trail grooming that they do during the winter, used to, where, for the snow machines, where we can get the archery groups to kick in or help do some volunteer work for it or something. I don't know.
All right.
Thank you.
We're, we're a little past time. Um, there is a conversation you have about archery. I got a call. I think Commissioner North did, maybe others did. Commissioner North brought up the possibility of an outdoor rec grant. Um, uh, we don't have anything budgeted this year, so I'm not sure that we can do anything this fiscal year. But I know we can have conversations this fiscal year, so I think we've got a good start. So I think circle back with us, um, in a couple of months, maybe with some, some ideas, um, and we'll go forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next appointment is with Wyoming Department of Transportation for our STIP presentation, so, uh, welcome.
You ready?
All right. Commissioners, thank you for having me this afternoon. Uh, by introduction, my name is Mark Ayen. I'm the district engineer for YDOT District Two, based out of Casper. I have with me today, you met Jeff Getz, my public information officer. Uh, Mark Williams is my district construction engineer and Brooke Allen is my district traffic engineer. They're here for, in case I need to phone a friend on anything. Uh, just to spend a couple of minutes, uh, you guys have been around for this presentation in the past. Um, I'm here to talk about the STIP. I'm going to give you a little overview of YDOT and kind of where we're at and what we have going on. And I'm anxious to hear if you guys have anything that you need to share with us, of things that you know are coming up, um, projects that may be affecting us, uh, developments that we maybe haven't heard about. So, um, I'm going to kind of go through the first part of the presentation pretty quickly just to get to the, the meat that we want to get to. Um, our purpose, mission, vision and values and agency hasn't changed. Essentially, we're here to create a safe transportation network for the people of Wyoming so that we can, um, support commerce. We can support schools. We can support all the people getting to where they want to go. Um, this year, our executive staff has, um, developed a couple of areas of focus and strategic object, objectives we're working on. Um, those are listed there. Um, it's, but it's very similar to our, our previous mission and vision. You know, serving our customers, being transparent, engaging the public, um, valuing our employees and, uh, developing and maintaining strategic partnerships, which I consider this meeting and our partnership with Natrona County to be one of our strategic ones. We have our guiding principles that we've been living under for several years. Uh, essentially what those are is just that, hey, we're going to live within our budget. Uh, we're going to, um, kind of focus on things that we can afford when we can afford it. And if there's stuff that can wait, we're going to let it wait. Um, our funding is still a little scarce at times. Uh, we're doing fine. We're getting done what we want to get done, but, um, we're just here to just kind of prioritize stuff so that we get the biggest bang for our buck. Uh, we have a slide here. It says YDOT overview. It's just a simple slide. Um, it lists several of the agencies though that are underneath YDOT. Just so people understand, it's, we don't just plow roads and tear up roads. Um, Highway Patrol is under, under YDOT, the driver's license, um, we have an aeronautics program, the TMC, the tracks, uh, road conditions in the winter. We have an ITS branch. We have, um, emergency communications. They maintain the towers, the WILAN towers that everyone around the state uses. So just a quick little overview to let everybody know, hey, we're kind of all encompassing. It's not just the, the yellow truck you see out on the road. The breakdown for YDOT, um, like I said, I, this is District Two. It covers mainly Natrona, Converse, Platte, Goshen and, um, a bunch of little minor Nibrara and then little pieces of carbon and Laramie and Johnson and that kind of stuff. So, uh, but our, our district, uh, almost sixteen hundred highway miles within the district. We have the most miles. We've got just over six hundred and fifty bridges that we take care of both on system and off system. So, uh, you can just kind of see, just kind of fun facts we like to throw out there so that you kind of can keep track of the scope of what we're doing. Uh, I'm on slide nine now, the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. Essentially what this is, this is our funding for the year for, um, construction dollars. This is not our agency budget. This is our construction budget for fiscal year twenty-five, which starts on, um, October first of this year. So we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year. Uh, you can see that three hundred and sixty-two million dollars, um, that's spread out over the entire state. Uh, we put that fact on here, you know, the national average, most states are seventy percent. We put that fact on here, you know, the national average, most states are seventy percent state funded, thirty percent federal funded, we're almost exactly opposite that. Currently, our funding is only twenty-seven percent state, which is largely just to match the federal funding, which is seventy-three percent of our funding. I show in here a delayed projects list, this is just kind of a list of projects that that we have out there around the state that we have been unable to do because we have been unable to afford them. I like to point out the very top one, because you've all seen it in the news, the I eighty, I twenty-five interchange in Cheyenne is desperately in need of an overhaul and desperately need of reconstructing, but the price tag on that, it shows here is three hundred and ten million dollars. I I believe that number is about five years old, so you can probably guess it's a little higher than that. When you take that number compared to the three hundred and sixty-two million, you see now why we can't really do that that project just in any given year, so so this is just kind of a a short listing, this is not a comprehensive list, there are other projects out there that we have put on a delay list until funding becomes available, but this is just kind of the some of the stuff that we've got out there that we have been unable to do because of funding. Our highway project process, you guys are familiar with this, you were just talking about this on one of your projects, you know, there's a planning phase, a design phase and a contract phase, part of that planning phase is the STIP development, the STIP is the statewide transportation improvement program. It's our basically our six year plan for how we're gonna build our roads, what bridges we're gonna do, what we're gonna do. The process for building that STIP, you know, we we gather up our information during the winter, we have a bunch of asset systems, we have a pavement management, we have a bridge management, we have a safety management, we have facilities, we have all these things, everybody's keeping track, we've got all the data. We sit down then in April and May, maybe a little before that, as a district, and we take all that asset stuff, we talk to our maintenance format out on the roads, and we're like, hey, what's the roads we need to be looking at next up on the list? So we put together our candidate projects, we get together with our headquarters programs, we're like, hey, guys, here's what we wanna do, and start that partnership with them, and then we spend the summer going around and visiting with counties and towns and and people out in the world and say, hey, here's our plan, do you guys have any thoughts, do you have any questions or concerns? And that's kinda the process that we're in right here. At the end of the summer then, in September, the 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 STIP, the draft STIP will go to the Transportation Commission, and they will give it their approval, the Federal Highway Administration blesses it as well, and then that's our our final STIP, we publish it October first. We usually then amend it within a month or two, because things change and things come up and funding changes and that kinda stuff. So so the STIP is a is a pretty dynamic document, we use it, it's it's still pretty accurate, I mean, it's super accurate, but things move and we have to shove stuff around occasionally, so. When you get in the STIP, when you get in there, it's not just the highway projects that we're gonna mainly talk about today. We also will have transit projects, so like funding for the the city, buses are in there, there's funding for senior citizen centers around the state that we help with their busing, our aeronautics program is in there for work that we do at the airports, crack seal projects, infrastructure improvement, that kinda stuff, public safety communication, that's our radio towers, and then our capital improvements projects, that's new buildings, which we have not spent a lot on in the last several years, mainly because we're spending our money on our roads, so. When you get in there, you'll see a STIP project map, there's a there's a picture of one in your in your handout. Basically, it just shows, you know, between now and fiscal year twenty thirty-one, there's not a road that we're not gonna be on at some point, we're looking at a lot of stuff, so. You can go in there, you can sort the document by county, so Natrona County, you can go in, it'll pull up a bunch of tables, it'll show what the you know, what the aeronautics projects are in the county, it'll show what the transportation projects are in the county, it'll also have the transit projects. And then when you get down to the bottom of it, it has a basically a summary that shows that over the course of our STIP, which is a six or seven year document, we're looking at two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars worth of work in Natrona County. So I think that's a that's an interesting number, just for especially for you guys to keep track of, that this is the amount of money that's coming in that that we're doing work around your your area, so. The next couple pages, I'm just gonna kinda run through projects that we have going on, projects we have coming up. Feel free to stop me if you have questions, if you have comments, as I'm sure you might. We started, even though we're almost up on fiscal year twenty-five, we have two projects that you all are very familiar with that are fiscal year twenty-three projects that are still ongoing. They are the Casper Marginal Project from basically McKinley to Poplar Street, and then the Poplar Street Reconstruction between Yellowstone and Collins. Those projects are well underway, the Interstate Project, if you've been paying attention, if you're not avoiding it, like a lot of people are, you've been paying attention, we switched traffic a couple weeks ago, so we've got everybody on the northbound lane now, we're tearing the southbound lane up, get that done. Poplar Street, we are getting pretty close to being able to switch traffic to the other side of that as well, they've started doing concrete pavement, and they're making pretty good headway on that. This project, we have the same contractor on this project as the city has on their Midwest project, so those projects will run into each other. So occasionally, our people get blood over, the contractor people get blood over to the city job and stuff, but but often it's always making good headway on that, and things are going well, so I guess, any questions, I'll stop there on the ongoing projects, yes, sir, I I could tell you had one.
Mark, when's that Poplar Street scheduled to be finished?
The completion date on that, the contract completion date is a year from October, but their plan is to basically be, unless Mark Williams yells at me, their plan is basically done this fall.
Okay, that's good news.
That was my question, a lot of people ask me about that.
And how about I twenty-five?
Yeah, I twenty-five, we we have another full year, it'll be a year from this October, basically, and then that one will be done.
Okay.
Okay, fiscal year twenty-four then, which is our current year, a couple of these projects that you have seen going on, a micro-surfacing, this is on I twenty-five, that's that, it looks like just a really thin overlay that we did north of here up by the Midwest exit, and then the work that's ongoing now, it's CY Avenue, Wyoming Boulevard. We milled all that concrete out, we've replaced a whole bunch of that curb and gutter, we're putting in new ADA features and re-overlaying the whole thing, so that'll be pretty nice, yes, sir.
And when's that gonna be done, cuz I drive across it every day.
Then we're gonna try and drag that one out as long as we possibly can, no, I it, we're probably within a month or two, it'll be done this fall at the latest, so. They're put, they're doing top lift now, so it should be go pretty quick. Fiscal year twenty-five then, these are projects that will go to contract starting this October. We include in here a couple of projects that are kind of in the general area, just so that you guys may be running into them as well. There's a job, a section of I twenty-five up by KC, the Triple T interchange, we did one of the lanes la- two years ago, we'll be doing the sister lanes this next year, a mill and overlay on two eighty-seven, this is south of Mighty Gap, on the way to Rollins, thirty-three to forty-five-ish. Wyoming three eighty-seven is the road from Edgerton, this will be kinda that first twelve miles. We'll start just north of Edgerton and go up through basically just past the Lynch Road, that's kinda where that job will end. There's a a bridge replacement on the Barnum Road, if you haven't been out, if you've been out the Barnum Road, out of KC, we're doing a replacement out there. A bridge replacement on two fifty-three, this is Hat Six. There's there's one of, there there are two timber bridges left in my district, that's one of them, we'll be replacing that bridge and at the same time is a bridge in Platt County on the same project. And then a couple of bridge rehabilitations, I twenty-five over the Blackmore Road, and then two twenty Casper Canal out towards Alkova. So that's fiscal year twenty-five, any questions?
Actually, do have one question on that, Blackmore Road, will that ever have any kind of entrance exit ramps to that?
It would be hard to do one there mainly because of its proximity to Curtis Street. There's certain requirements, federal highway requires spacing between interchanges, and it doesn't, it violates that. If if there was ever a case that all of a sudden there was a dramatic need there, there's a process you can go through, but when we've talked to them in the past, they're not keen on it. Thank you. Okay, fiscal year twenty twenty-six then, this first one here, I twenty-five, one eighty-six, one eighty-eight, this will be the section, we'll tie in the Walsh Drive project that we finished a couple years ago with the McKinley job that's or the Center Street job that's going now, this will be largely a lot of the work will be around the McKinley Street Bridges, but then we also will be, and this structure will be adding weave lanes between Center and McKinley and McKinley and Bryanstock so that it will help with those super short onramps that we have now that everyone hates and causes issues, so we'll be doing that on there. Wyoming one ninety-two, technically, this is in Johnson County, but this is a section of the the Lynch Road, we're gonna get rid of small gar rail there and makes that safer. US twenty twenty-six rehabilitation, this is out by Powder River on twenty-six, and then we've got that Poplar Street from CY to Collins project is coming up, which will include the intersection at Collins and Poplar and work its way up the hill and tie into that CY and Poplar project we did a couple years ago. The biggest portion of this project is, we've got two, I don't know if you saw the sewer lines we put in along Poplar this last winter, we're gonna extend those up the hill, so by the time you put two of those in, there's not a lot of road left, so. We won't be doing any widening or anything in there, the right of way doesn't allow for that, but we will be getting that, so we'll have a good a good storm sewer system then clear to the river from from that south side of Casper. Any questions on those? All right, twenty-seven then, I twenty-five, we got a stock pass replacement at two seventeen, that's up north of here, there's a strange situation where there's a stock pass that was put in when the interstate was built, and we are required by agreement basically with those landowners to keep that stock pass, and it's collapsing, so we'll be replacing that stock pass up there. We've got an overlay and a chip seal, forty-four to fifty-one, this is kinda out by the Independence Rock Rest area on two eighty-seven. We got an overlay and wearing cores between Allendale and Twelfth Street, this is on Outer Drive, so this basically will be like Casper Mountain Road around to Twelfth Street. Wyoming two fifty-three is Hat Six, we'll be doing, it's called an in-place recycle, basically for the first eleven miles, which is the length of our section of that road. That'll get that'll get rehabbed and overlaid that year, and then we've got a a BROS. project on Badwater Road, which is, I believe, out Powder River way, way, way out. This actually was originally District Five was gonna do this job, because it's that far west, but we went ahead and said we'd take it back, so. You've done that one.
Mark, are you gonna be able to on two fifty-three, the in-place recycle, are you gonna be able to work on any of the shoulders, some of them are pretty steep on that.
So, yeah, we will be, actually, we're we're kinda doing a my my maintenance guys are using that road kind of as a training ground for running some equipment, so I don't know if you've been out there that first half mile or so, we've started kinda working on those shoulders and trying to widen that just a hair. So kinda the plan is those guys are gonna do that work, and then under the contract will mainly just be surfacing. So we're gonna try and deal with some of those steep sleep slopes as much as we can, it's gonna require some pipe extensions, cuz that's where a lot of those, there's like a short pipe and wide road, so, yeah, we are, we are working on that. Fiscal year twenty-eight, I twenty-five, this is south of town or east of town, depending on who you're talking to, mill and overlay, this is the other side of that road that we did a couple years ago, out there by Glen Rock. Two eighty-seven, seven eighty-nine Fremont County, this is the out towards Jeffrey City, an overlay and chip seal out there. And then this one in twenty twenty-eight, Casper First Street Concrete Rehab, this will run from the River Bridge on First Street to basically where Yellowstone, First Street, where that goofy kinda Y interchange is. This will be that stretch of road, it's, the concrete is getting in pretty rough shape, we're trying really hard to keep it at that. If we start to get into by our policy, if we start to get into a lot of other stuff, it starts to get super expensive, but we will need to do some ADA upgrades through there because we're working through there. We are talking with the city about if they wanna do any underground work while we're there, that'd be perfect time for them to do it while we're tearing everything up. But we're hoping if if not, to keep that the final treatment's gonna end up kinda looking a lot like what we're doing at CY and Wyoming Boulevard right now, we're looking at milling the concrete and putting in a high-powered plant mix in its place.
Seth, Mark, at those busy intersections like Wyoming Boulevard and CY, does that asphalt last as long as the concrete?
So it didn't used to, but the technology has changed, there's a lot of additives in that oil now that's super resistant to rutting and cracking and stuff. Honestly, our biggest concern is that the cracks from the concrete pavement will reflect up through, but we're seeing now that with the additives we're putting in, it's not, so. That's, fingers crossed, to be honest, that's our hope, but it's pretty new technology, so. Where's that at, fiscal year twenty-nine? Then Wyoming two fifty-eight, this is Outer Drive again, and I do not remember where the, is this?
Is this fifteenth street down, or is this Mills?
Okay. So this will be the stretch through Mills, a mill and overlay. We've got a bridge rehabilitation out on Wyoming four eighty-seven, which is a Shirley Rim Road, and then we've got some bridge replacement jobs, thirty-three mile road and Gray Reef Road, and then way out in thirty thirty, we've got an overlay on on three eighty-seven, which is the road from the interstate to Midwest, and then the I twenty-five mill and overlay that's just east of town, so basically run from Hat Six to Curtis Street. Any questions on projects, I threw a whole bunch of info at you.
Commissioners, I are, we're privileged to have our mayor here, Mr. Mayor, did you have any questions since a lot of these impact the city?
I'd like to defer that question, no. That's a really good question. We're trying to formulate a plan. You know, it was gonna be part of the Poplar Street job we're doing now, and because of the costs, dealing with the underground, Amaco stuff, it just got super expensive, so we are kinda taking a step back and we're trying to come up with a plan. Actually, more importantly, we're not worried about the bridge, it's fine. Our biggest concern is the intersection of First and Poplar, that there's some capacity issues there, some operational issues, and that work there is what's driving the River Bridge, so we're kinda taking a we're trying to take a look at it from, give it some fresh eyes, we were, that project sat around so long, I think we had some bad data in there, so. We were, that project sat around so long, I think we had some bad data in there. So it's not in our plan right now, but it's on our radar. How's that for good answer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Thanks, Mr. Mayor for being here. Um, our expert, uh, Mr. Hagler is also here. Um, I don't know if you had any hot pressing questions regarding the STIP. Um, okay. Uh, I don't think we have any other questions on the project. So thank you.
All right. Uh, just to, uh, kind of run through these last couple, couple, uh, pages then. Um, there's some information here on our transit projects. Uh, like I said, we fund transit in all counties in the state. Uh, some of them more, you know, obviously Naterona County gets a lot more because we have an actual bus system that, uh, YDOT helps fund. Uh, but there are funds available for, for administration and, and maintenance of, of, like I said, buses for senior citizen homes in Pinedale if they need that. Uh, grant opportunities, a lot of discussion about grants out there. Uh, just, uh, if you go on our webpage and you look up transportation grants, there's money out there available. Some of it is stuff that we're not eligible to apply for, but cities and counties are. So we put that information out there. There's some numbers I'll show you at the end here, some guys and gals here at YDOT that can help with, with filling out those applications if you need them. Uh, next steps, as we talk about the STIP and as we talk about stuff coming up, uh, you can, you can go on our webpage. And you'll, you can look up the STIP and you can make comments there. Um, if you have questions about any of the stuff going on, uh, there's a whole bunch of info, a whole bunch of names here. Uh, starting with myself and working up from me and then that, that John Davis, that last name on there. He's our, kind of our grant guy. He can help you out with those. Sarah Ellis, um, some of your people are very familiar with her. She handles our local government's office. So the TAP grants and those kinds of things, she works through those. And then, um, I just encourage you to go out on your, on the webpage and visit our STIP there. So with that, that's my, that's my presentation, but I would be interested to know if there are any development things that maybe coming up that we haven't gotten wind of yet that maybe we should have on our radar? Or any other information you would want to share with me?
I can't think of any projects that you wouldn't be well aware of. The Anacline projects well underway. Everybody sees that drives around there. Um, I know that you guys are in touch with Mr. Hagler and, you know, he, he's usually pretty well informed on, on projects. Uh, I can't think of any projects. I had, I had one question. It's not really on a project base, but Commissioner North?
Mark, I just want to thank you guys for coming in here and keeping us informed every year. It's helpful to have an idea of what's coming down, down the pike and, and what we need to look out for. And it's also helpful to know an approximation as far as when things may or may not be done. So that does make a big difference and I do appreciate that.
Like you said, you have my enough and I know you have my number. If you have questions, feel free to call anytime. If you see something going on, let me know.
You bet. Thanks.
The Casp, the entity Casper Carbon Capture, um, is kind of at the beginning stages of, of their project. Um, uh, it's direct air capture, um, impacted areas would be kind of between the Hat 6 road, uh, or phase one, between the Hat 6 road and the interstate. I, I know Oil and Gas Commission and DQ are aware of it. Um, we don't know how it might impact transportation, but I suppose it could.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything about it yet. So.
Okay. Um, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, uh, there was some discussion about, um, electrical charging stations and the federal, um, you know, the, the purse strings included that the spacing had to be what 50 miles or something between charging stations, which was almost ludicrous or cost prohibitive or both. Um, any updates? Somebody did actually talk to me about charging stations a couple of weeks ago. And so I didn't know if there's anything at the federal or at the state level, any developments.
So I asked specifically the other day, cause I somehow knew this question was going to come up. Uh, we are in the process, we have, um, a couple of years ago, we were in the process of writing an RFP for people to be able to apply to get these NAVI funds. And it was an 80/20 and the 50 mile an hour space or 50 mile spacing that you were talking about. And the whole thing just, it got more and more convoluted the further we got into it. So we're actually in the process of rewriting our, our RFP, um, and getting it approved by whoever AG's office needs to approve it. Uh, but I, I was told that nationwide from that program, I think three stations have been built. So, um, it hasn't been super successful, I don't feel. Now, in the meantime, we've had, you know, several go up here in Casper just on their own, which, you know, it's, I, I liken it to gas stations, where we don't tell you where to build a gas station. You build a gas station where you think it'll make money. And I think that, uh, electric charging station is probably in that same boat. So.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mark, this is off topic of, uh, projects and whatnot a little bit. Just call me Dallas today. Um, how does, how do we or how do people go about trying to get a speed limit changed on a section of highway?
It, it depends on where the highway is. I mean, if it's like.
It's the bypass with Robertson, going from that corner just about south of Robertson over the hill into the intersection.
So there are, there are a couple, I mean, ultimately what it comes down to is you need to have a study done that will justify, um, a lower speed limit or a higher speed limit. I'm assuming you want to go lower though. There are, there are state statutes in place that kind of govern how that process works and how, how low you can go and that kind of stuff. Uh, the other, the other thing I guess I would say to keep in mind on there is that, that section of the West Belt Loop is, is technically under the jurisdiction of the city of Mills. And so, because they annexed all that three or four years ago. And so since it's in their city limits, that does allow them some other latitude that allows them to do some stuff. Um, it's, it's pretty convoluted, but, but ultimately really what it is, is there's a, you need to do a, um, an engineering study that will show, you know, based on speed or traffic or whatever, that it needs to be lowered.
On your guys' end, on Wyoming DOT side, is there any talk about doing a study for that intersection right there, that section of road?
Um, we, we have not talked about it because we have not received a request to. We, we normally wait until someone says, hey, we'd like you guys to do that. So, um, can I do that now?
Yes, if you want to. I, I hate that. So I, I avoid that intersection. And then over there at the bi, at the bypass 2026 and, and the new, you'll have semis just rolling through there and it's just insane sometimes. So, I mean, there's been a lot of, a lot of life lost at that Robertson bypass or intersection and just, and trying to get across that intersection at times is just a pain. I think potentially 10 miles would help. 10 miles an hour reduction would really, really help everybody. But if you need a study, you need a study.
The person who can do that study is in this room. So I'll, I'll have them start working on it.
Okay. I appreciate it. I really do. I think, I think the citizens in that area who have to use that intersection really appreciate it as well.
Yeah, part of, part of the.
Regardless of how the study turns out, that it's being looked at is, is, is.
Yeah. Part, part of the thing that's really interesting about that particular intersection, really that whole stretch of road there is, is, I think everyone anticipated that development would sprout up along there really quickly and would drive. You know, cause when you start getting like side friction from other approaches and extra businesses, it starts to really drive that conversation more. And because there really hasn't been anything developed out there, it kind of has become a strange, I won't say no man's land, but it just kind of is out there. So, um, yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Along the same lines, you know, we have an issue with a gravel pit that's wanting to be placed on the base of Casper Mountain. And one of the roads that goes up there is Coates Road. Are you familiar with Coates Road? So the kind of trucks that would be coming down that road will weigh anywhere from 80 to 130 pounds. And, uh, it's mostly gravel and it's got a light, a light coating on it that the city put on a few years ago on their portion of the road. Uh, one of the things the residents are concerned with are those big trucks coming down that road, which really has a, I'm not even sure what the speed limit is, and then entering the highway without any lights or anything. Uh, is that something you need to be looking into?
So the, the, the condition quote of, of Coates Road, you know, that's a, a city street at this point. It's, it's not a state road. Coates Road is not. 220 is. Um, but again, 220 is in a weird position because at that point it is within the city's jurisdiction as well. Um, we've had discussions with the city about, you know, once, once it gets to the point where someone has actually applied for the permits, then, um, we normally at that point have a discussion then where we start to require a traffic impact study from the developer or the, whoever it is, um, that would address, um, the need for signals and would address those kinds of things. I will, I will say from the brief amount of time we've looked at it, where Coates Road is in, relation to where Robertson Road is and Valley and, um, Paradise, that puts a lot of signals right next to each other that starts to create problems for traffic. So it's a, it's a sticky situation that someone's going to have to look at at some point. Uh, we've had some kind of preliminary discussions with the city engineering staff, just that when they start to look at what's going on there, based on those applications, that we would like to be part of that discussion with them. Cause these roads, honestly, these state highways within city limits get to be kind of a strange thing is who's, who's in charge. Um, but we work really well with the city of Casper and we talk with their, their guys all the time. And so we've kind of been watching it and, uh, when it gets to the point, the decision need to be made, we'll, we'll be in that conversation.
What typically would you require? Just assuming for purposes of this conversation, a hypothetical conversation. What would you require if those size trucks are coming off a road similar to the Coates Road, getting on Highway 220 and wanting to turn left and turn right? What would you, what have you seen typically done in those situations?
I mean, the, the, the biggest issue you're going to run into is, um, it, it's going to vary because of traffic. I mean, we know that 220 out there, CY is a busy road. Without knowing what kinds of trucks specifically they're going to have, you know, we would, we would at times, um, have the contractor put in like center turn lanes on 220, um, possibly some turn bays. Uh, like if they're going to make a, a right turn off of Coates Road, we might have them put a, like an ax, acceleration receiving lane on 220 that the truck can turn into and then merge into traffic. Um, or I mean, if it's, if it's above a certain number a day, then we start to have a discussion about signals. Uh, it's just, it's so varied by location and that one, you know, without knowing, you know.
Let's say it's 50 trucks a day going in and coming down and that they're typically weighing over a hundred thousand pounds and are typically 75 feet long. Then what?
I mean, the, the honest, the honest answer is that, you know, we don't, if, as long as they're hauling legal, we don't put restrictions on what trucks can pull on and off our highway. We just try and do what we can to make their, um, entrance and exit from there as safe as possible for everybody else. So, um, and honestly, I mean, 50 trucks a day isn't a huge number. It's, you know, it's a significant number, but, um, you know, if it was 200 trucks a day, then, then that's a different conversation. You know, 50 trucks a day is, you know, you're not going to have, you know, our concern gets to be when they have three trucks, four trucks at a time waiting to turn onto 220 from Coates Road. And then they're backing up traffic on Coates Road and they're not being able to find a gap on 220. Um, it just, there, there's a lot of things you have to consider and it's hard to, to really speculate.
So you're thinking the city may be, uh, more involved than I think a lot of people think in terms of whether there should be traffic lights there or widening of the road or paving of the road, because most of the road is gravel. Uh, and there is some pavement, but they've, there's been some testimony, not testimony, but a statement by the former city employee who was involved with that road, saying it was never intended to have heavy truck traffic on that type of pavement they used. So that would be a city issue. Your issue is basically making 220 safe for entry and exit, I'm assuming.
Great. Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird for bringing that up. You know, um, you, you're well aware, I'm sure that, uh, we've heard from a lot of people, um, hours and hours of public comment over the course of months and months. Um, there's a, there's a great deal of concern about the appropriateness of, uh, this kind of operation at that particular location. Um, and so we appreciate YDOT, um, being as proactive as possible and working with the city and, and the county. And, and I, I agree that until we actually see the, an application for a conditional use permit, it's hard for us to judge or evaluate and, and make recommendations, um, thumbs up, thumbs down, whatever. Um, so please reach out to us, um, and Mr. Hagler, um, you know, for, uh, any sort of information you, you all need. Um, we might do the same or have him do the same. Um, because I, I think we are just concerned about, um, you know, a lot of the aspects of, of a potential gravel pit project there. And I know those include the safety of the traveling public along, right, the, as the, uh, the ingress and egress from 220.
Yep. Yeah.
Great. Anything else you wanted us to know?
I, I have nothing else. Unless you have any other thing else for me.
No, we appreciate your time and thanks to you and your staff for coming in today.
Yeah. Thanks for having us.
See you next time.
See you next time.
Okay.
If not before.
I think we'll take a five minute break.
I know.
I knew that's what it was about. As soon as they said it, I'm going, why? Why are you in the parking lot all the time?
And it said the bills are enduring.
Yeah.
Either we're gonna have to debate it, or we'll have elections yet. Early voting. Hold on.
But there's, there's still, you can do it by now.
Right.
Or, you know, it's a deep office, you can do it personally.
I should. I thought it was the Sunday, so we're not voting next one.
No, no, no. Okay, okay, thank you.
And I took my sides off, life is good.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Gotta make the news, guys. Well done.
Let's go with crybabies. Is that offensive, dearie?
Thank you.
Didn't even occur to me, or what, I left them on the car, I could've done, I just switched them to the truck today, cause she's taking the car.
You know what, what I'd say is if I had, if I only had to worry about parking in my life, there'd be gold.
Right. I have a couple of other things to think about that are far more important, right? Oh, these kids.
Thanks, Michael.
No problem. Thought about it being voting time, I'd have done it the other way anyway. It'd been easier, I would've had to switch them.
Okay, we're back, uh, from our break, uh, for our next appointment with our, uh, county attorney, Heather Duncan Malone, for a legal update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess to start, are there any questions on any of the agenda items for this evening? There's quite a few items on the consent agenda. I don't know if anybody's, uh...
I have, I have some. Commissioner Mill?
Yes, sir, I have a question on, oh, I don't have it here, the, uh, liquor license transfer, and I'd actually make a motion when we get to that point that we add an executive session for, uh, legal advice concerning that.
Okay.
So, so, do we close the public hearing? And then confer with counsel? That's kinda what, what we were thinking, I think, in terms of the timing of it.
Okay.
I mean, I know we can move to go into executive session anytime, it doesn't have to be on the agenda. Maybe it's a heads up, or maybe...
Yeah, that's basically it.
Or, you could potentially amend the agenda to include it prior, prior to...
Okay.
However you wanna handle it.
Okay.
But I think we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
Uh, to county attorney, do, do we, when we have one of these, hypothetically, if we have a liquor license decision, what I personally like to do in public is find out from the clerk and from you whether the papers are in order and whether what, what is happening is legal, because I think the public has a right to know that, if we're granting that. Do you agree with that?
Yes, sir, I do. I, I believe that the, the clerk, um, will have a report to give to you that details, you know, the completeness and, and the correctness of the application. Um, and, and so, yes.
And the sheriff could give us a report if he wanted, I assume.
He could. I, I don't know if he'll be here or not, but he certainly could.
I, uh, I advised him about this earlier today down in Tracy, or was it today or yesterday I came in, today? That this was coming up, and I think he said he knew that. But I just wanted to make sure that whoever applies for this is, meets the requirements, basically.
So, Commissioner Laird, um, yeah, uh, our, our clerk will give us a report. Um, if we, if you want the sheriff to attend, um, I think that we would want to, I mean, if you would want him to speak, we oughta give him a heads up of the area, uh, of, of question or concern that, that you have. Because I, I know he's not gonna speak to the legal sufficiency of the application.
No, he's not, and he, and I did ask him, and of course, this current owner, uh, there were ne- as I understand it, there was never any real problems. They might've had some little thing happen, but nobody was charged with anything. And so, the current owner is selling it, uh, so, I don't think that, based upon what I heard from him, it didn't sound like there was any issues about it at all, actually.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Laird, I did reach out to the applicant and told him the date that this would be heard, and I also highly recommended that he show up tonight. So, um, he was contacted to that effect.
Commissioner Freel.
Mr. Chairman, along the lines of what, uh, Commissioner Laird is asking, I, I think if we do have time, maybe we ask for, uh, calls for service to both locations, um, over the last, you know, two-year period or so, just, uh...
I think there was one that we got, uh, Commissioner Freel, uh, about, uh, when a former owner had it. What, what, uh, happened there, but they, they were pretty benign. I mean, you know, a couple drunk driving arrests and that kinda thing, but nothing, nothing against the bar owner, and the bar owner hadn't been cited for anything in, in my recollection at that time, which, when I looked all of that over, uh, it was, you know, some, that some of the liquor stores in town and that are fairly well-known had more problems than, than that place did with people, you know, coming in and...
Sure, but I think that being a liquor license, going back to where it came from, it'd be a good idea to refresh all of our memories. I think you got a great idea there.
Commissioner Freel, um, I can, uh, send a text to the sheriff. You were asking for calls uh, for the two liquor license locations, one being the, I don't, I don't know the...
English Avenue location and Talk Road.
English Ave. and Talk Road, and for Talk Road, that would be for the...
Nineteen ten.
What would it?
Nineteen ten.
Yeah, but, but it would be for what period of time, like the, over the last, cause it hasn't been in operation for three years or, or two years? I don't know. So, I mean...
Something like that.
I'd give the sheriff just a, a little bit of a time range.
Say, maybe a five-year time, timeframe, being that it seems like as though it's the exact same type of an establishment going back in there. So, I, I think we should just all be informed, cause that's, that's a great point that, uh, Commissioner Laird made, and I think we should be informed.
I'm gonna make another good point.
Good.
I know you're pretty adept at cross-examining people, Commissioner. And so, I know who, who, the people are, I'm sure the person who wants this license is coming in, and I expect you to do your normal great job of cross-examination.
So, we'll all have the opportunity to ask questions tonight, and I think that we should, and I think that I've been contacted by a couple people that are expecting us to ask questions. I, I hope that there's, um, a, a good showing of public comment tonight so that we can hear, um, different perspectives. All right, um, back to the agenda, uh, consent agenda items, unless Commissioner North, you had something on the liquor license application?
No, mine's on the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Uh, CNCHD, we have two things on there. I just didn't know exactly what they were, and I thought that we had, uh, ratified an agreement last, at the last meeting for the maximum.
So, um, I, I'll give a shot at speaking to that.
Better informed on these than I am.
Well, we'll, we'll see. Okay, so, one item is the site plan application.
The what?
Site plan application that, uh, we submit as the owner to the city of Casper. Um, I had specifically asked yesterday our owners' rep and our counsel working on this, and Jared, and Brandon Daigle, uh, if they approve, um, and recommended, um, approval of that site plan and the site plan agreement as to form and content. Because the form is the city of Casper standard form that they've been utilizing for all comers for the last thirty or forty years, and I specifically, and actually asked them this early in the spring, if, if there were any things that we should take out that didn't really apply to us as a governmental entity. But the answer to the question is basically, no, we get what we get, and we don't throw a fit. Um, in any event, we have received, uh, an email of approval from our owners' rep, uh, and from, um, the civil engineer, Justin Sterns at WLC, and Mr. Daigle, and legal counsel doesn't have any objections. So, I think we move forward with that site plan application. Want me to speak to the others?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so, just so I...
Was that the C-MAR contract, Mr. Chairman?
No, that is the, um, I think it's like, is it at the very end of the packet?
That would be...
Or the last one of the consent? No, well, that, I, we, I just talked about the site plan. The other one is the construction materials testing, um, and then I think there's also a C-MAR. Um, the, the thing we did last time was we approved the amount, but we didn't approve the AIA, American Institute of Architects document. And so, there, it's just to get that change formalized for purposes of construction and has the, um, maximum amount. The amount hasn't changed. It's what we approved. It's just we didn't have, as I understand and recall, the AIA document done last time. So it's to be, it's a formality in that respect.
Okay, so the stuff you were talking about was the ratification of engineering economics, or was it? Yeah. Well, you go, you're talking about the engineering.
I'm, I'm looking for the site plan.
Yeah, I don't see that.
This, this one, L, is ratification of engineering economics proposal, so I wondered about that myself.
I just don't know what those are. I, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, the. Uh, I believe that our owners' rep submitted a cover letter about the engineering economics proposal. And that that was, we had, they had somebody back out, jump in, counsel, if I'm getting off on this. But let me try to grab. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I have the work session packet.
I'm talking about the actual.
I, I know. I just didn't open up the right one. Okay, page. Facilities lease agreement. Oh, seventy-four. Yeah, field lab, construction materials testing. And this is the one that they wanted to actually start, or is this the one that they wanted to start yesterday? To keep working. Um, so page one eighty-six of the packet is a letter from our owners' rep. I don't know if you have that.
No, that's part of our promise. I can't.
All right. So page one eighty-six, request for construction material testing services approval. The paragraph one is they sent out an RFP. The Bance Geo Tech Solutions and Inberg Miller's responded. Then the one, AGS withdrew because of loss of two staff members. So, um, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I asked Jared to come by. I think he can explain probably the.
Oh, now you're, now you're throwing me a bone. Okay. Um, so anyway, they recommended that we approve the hiring of Inberg Miller's as the construction materials testing agent. Hi, Jared.
Mr. Chair.
Um, Commissioner North, do you want to re-ask your question?
I gotta find. Basically, there's three different things that are listed on the consent agenda.
Turn on your microphone.
There's three items that are listed on the consent agenda related to the Health Department.
Yes, Commissioner.
Would you mind explaining what, it's hard to read. I, I can't find the complete packet online. That's probably the reason why I'm asking that. So.
That is.
Sorry, Michelle.
That's fair, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, one item is the request to approve Inberg Miller as the, for the materials testing. Uh, we initially on that sent out an RFP. There were two, thank you, uh, two proposals to. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, there were, there were two companies that proposed.
Two companies that proposed. One withdrew. We're down to one, uh, one remaining. However, that was the lower bid and the, the company that we were gonna recommend selecting as it is. Uh, so I, I think that would ask that the commission approve Inberg Miller for that project. Uh, the, uh, next, it would be. The ratification of the engineering economics proposal. Uh, that would be for our commissioning agent that we had selected. Uh, we had realized that the, um, submitted during the July meeting had the wrong signature, uh, the wrong name for the signature line. Uh, so it was approved by the commission and already went through the commission. We just needed the correct signature for this.
That's just a correction.
Yeah, and that's the construction man, no, that, that's the commissioning agent.
The commissioning agent.
Is there anything on there that's costing us extra money?
I don't believe so. Uh, I, I don't believe so at this time. Uh, everything was already approved in that Health Department budget and the guaranteed maximum price. The site plan agreement, uh, that would be O on there, is the site plan agreement with the city. Uh, we essentially, uh, it's a standard agreement that the city would enter into. Uh, we would need to sign this to be able to obtain our building permits.
Okay, that, that, that was basically what my, why I was asking the question is because I thought that we had already approved all this stuff, and then it's like it showed up again. It's like, why is it on here again? But that explains it. If you, if we didn't have the right signature or something else.
Correct.
Then that, that takes care of that issue.
Yes.
I, that's, that's where my concern was, is just, it's like, I was pretty sure we voted on that last time around. So how come we're voting on this again?
This makes sense, Mr. Commissioner.
All right. Um, thank you, Commissioner North. Um, it, it is a little bit confusing. You know, are these new items or old items? And they're, they're all items that have been in process and old items, but it's cleaning up the paperwork for the most part. Um, so I, I didn't have anything else on Health Department related. I had a couple other consent agenda items for Heather, but you're welcome to weigh in on them too, if you're the guy. The columbarium agreement. Um, I looked at that. That is item what? Uh, C?
Yes.
Um, the agreement, and it's, uh, it says that the county agrees to abide by all city policies and procedures applicable to columbariums. Um, are we comfortable with what those policies and procedures are and that we can agree to them? Because I'm not familiar with the city's policies.
Um, I, to be honest, I'm not sure what exactly the, what policies they may have with respect to columbariums. Um, so I, I couldn't say whether, I mean, I, I don't see, just thinking about it, why you would have any difficulty complying. But if you'd like us to look into that further, we can.
Well, it just kind of fits under the same, I guess, category of what governmental entities use for private parties sometimes works fine, and it's tried and tested, and that's, that's fine. We're, we're kind of looking at it from a different perspective. Um, but we just need to make sure it still fits us as well. Commissioner Freel, I don't know if you know anything about that particular provision.
So the only two things that I know about it is basically if we put another columbarium in, in place, we need to make sure that it meets the requirements on the foundation to support it, just like we're doing right now. And then the second thing is, is that there's just a process. You can't, the coroner just can't take a, uh, indigent remains or unknown remains and just go stick them in a, a slot out there and call it good. You have to go through the city so that they know, they're not gonna know who, but they're gonna know that we have remains within, um, you know, the confines of this, of this block of the columbarium. It, it's just a record-keeping process with them to know what's coming in and going out of. You may end up ultimately identifying an unknown remain and take it out of there and give it back to the family. So it's just that process of working with the city so they can keep their record-keeping straight as opposed to us just going in and filling up boxes.
Heather, I would ask you to get a copy of the policies and procedures that are applicable and make sure that your office has them and is comfortable with them, and that the coroner's office has a copy and is comfortable with them.
Okay.
Um, I don't see any issues with that, but, but we ought to know what we're signing up for. The other issue, which is, it was curious to me, which is our MOU has a termination of, by either party within thirty days. So, okay, um, I'm not going into this. I don't think that, that we are going into this thinking that somebody's gonna be terminating this anytime soon. The, 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 the issue, and I'm not suggesting that the city would do this, but I'm suggesting that sometimes parties, when they get out of one contract, then they negotiate different terms for it to be renewed or re-instituted or, or whatever. And, and so I didn't know if there was a conversation that was had with anybody over at the city about, um, the appropriateness of that thirty-day termination. Um, I, I mean, I don't know if you would do, um, you know, one-year annually renewing, or I'm sorry, automatically renewing or, or what, but somebody put that in there? And so I was wondering if that was intentional or just what somebody thought.
I think, Mr. Mr. Chairman, that's a standard provision within the, within the template of the MOU. Um, I think what's contemplated is that this agreement will continue on, you know, basically in perpetuity, um, and that this provision is, is just, gives the ability for the county or the city to terminate it if we determine that, for whatever reason, maybe the arrangement isn't working or it needs, you know, there needs to be something different.
What I, what I would prefer to see is more than thirty days. Um, and I don't know if others feel strongly enough about it to, to join me on this, but I think a sixty or ninety day, um, because if, if we need to go start putting indigent remains back in a C-can versus having some continued conversations with the city, or hey, this isn't working, let's work through this. Because we meet twice a month, um, there's always a, you know, a delay in things anyhow. And so that would be one thought I had.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, basically, my understanding from your concerns is that you'd like to pull item C from the consent agenda potentially, or at least table it for now?
Well, I think we all want progress on this.
But I mean, until we get the information or contract from, or legal, or, or, how would you like to handle this?
I wouldn't object, um, unless somebody told me there's a time sensitivity to this. I wouldn't object to delaying it for two weeks. Um, uh, we could do it subject to county legals and the coroner's approval of city policies and procedures applicable to columbarium. And we could propose a third, instead of thirty days, we could propose a sixty or ninety. Um, so I, I could go.
Mr. Chairman.
I could go either way. Hang on a second. Commissioner Mill, did you, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Commissioner Laird?
So I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, but what I, I'm, maybe I missed something. Does our county attorney, has she read the agreement?
Yes.
Yes, she's read the agreement. It's the policies and procedures that you might not be clear on.
And so you're not sure what the policies and procedures are?
That is correct. That wasn't provided.
I think I would want to know those and want to, as you've said, between her and the coroner, taking a look at those, because we might not recognize something that would be important. So I'd like, and if, that's one of the things I don't like about the consent agendas, is, is that sometimes they're skimmed over and we don't really look at them as carefully as we do other things. So I would like it to be a policy of the county attorney's department whenever we're signing any legal agreement that is thoroughly vetted by them, and they can tell us what's all involved before we vote, because at this point, I couldn't vote on it anyway, so I agree with tabling it, if that's what the consensus is.
Do any of the commissioners have, go, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say, I just confirmed it. We don't even have a ship date on this yet, so and it's gonna take a bit of time to get it here, so I agree with pulling it to get the answers for the policy. Secondly, I also agree with it, maybe even a sixty day, not a thirty day, just simply because if there was ever an issue with it and we had to move it somewhere, it's gonna take some time to move that. So I would say at least sixty, because we would own it and we would have to relocate it somewhere.
Commissioners, um, what's your pleasure of increasing the thirty days to sixty versus ninety?
I'm in favor of that.
Which one?
Either sixty or ninety. I personally.
I'd go ninety personally. We only meet twice a month.
Well, not only that, with that, uh, concern is, I think ninety is more reasonable.
Does anybody have heartache with ninety days? Okay, I think, I think you should propose that, get the policies, um, applicable to columbaria, and then, um, we can chat. And I, I, next, you know, we can probably have this approved at our next meeting, although I think that when you give us a, um, the, the, the contract, if you can give us a short memo, a one-pager that says, okay, there are no issues, the coroner has no issues with the policies and procedures, and, and if we want to get them from you and review them ourselves, fine. I don't know that I need to do that, but I darn sure want to make sure you and the coroner have a chance to.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe there's any time-sensitive issues right now, since we, we don't even have it yet, so.
But, and, and, believe me, I appreciate Commissioner Freel's work and your work and the city's work on this. Um, it is, it's, we're making progress. Hey, what's this computer share Wells Fargo contract? Can you refresh my recollection on that?
Yeah, so I, I believe I sent an email out.
Sorry.
Uh, last week. This is, this has to do with the detention center and the, the bonds. Um, this is just approving, uh, the assignment of the bonds from Wells Fargo to computer share. That had to be done in a very limited amount of time.
Okay. The facilities leased for the GAL with Laramie Group, where is that office located, the GAL?
That is, I, it is the gray building across the parking lot, right by the, across from the courthouse on Center Street.
Would you check the description of the premises on that? Because I think it says two fifty-nine South Center Suite three sixteen, instead of one forty North Center. Um, if I was looking at the right thing of our two hundred and whatever pages. So that would be.
If you have, you have the page.
Page one sixty-eight. Lesser owns the property, two fifty-nine South Center Suite three sixteen, the leased premises. But I think that should be one forty North Center.
Um, okay, I.
Or one thirty-six or one thirty-four, as I recall, since I used to own that building.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Should we be concerned with number five, I see?
What's five?
The tax roll corrections.
Oh.
I don't know whether those are, whether those are a lowering of taxes, a raising of taxes, what? I don't know what they, why they're being corrected.
Yes, that's a. Yeah, the, the.
That's all it is, is a correction.
Yeah, it's just part of the correction.
Yeah.
Whether it's an increase, whether they've got charged a greater amount or less than a amount, a refund, basically.
I always like to compare what, what their tax was last year to this year to see if there's anything dramatic in that, in that number. I'm sure that our assessor, our treasurer, has that information, but.
Heather, we've given you one minute or maybe ninety seconds for legal updates. What do you have for us?
I think you're correct, Mr. Chairman. I think that address is incorrect. So we'll have to, we'll have to correct that at the lease.
Okay, and, and I've been in touch with you on a couple other things, the city-county land swap. Um, uh, we'll wanna, um, keep pressing ahead on that. We need an MOU with the city. So are there any other items either for tonight or that, just in general, legal updates you wanted to bring to our attention?
I don't believe so. Nope, I think, I think that's it for me.
Okay. Okay. So, we don't really have time for roundtables, so we won't worry about that. We'll take, just to, if you even want to take a break, you just want to keep going. Let's, so, Michelle, do you need us to give you a second to switch it? Okay, so, we will conclude our work session.